Hey, Tim. We good? Call the meeting to let the record show that this is a regular city council meeting held on Tuesday, February 21st, 2017. All members of council are present and the press has been duly notified. Would everyone please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would please remain standing if you'd like to join us in a moment of silence. And during that moment of silence, I would appreciate it if you would remember John Durvey's daughter Shaun, who passed away in January. And John is, was a strong member of this council and a good city employee. So if you would please remember her in your moment of silence. Thank you. Item number one on the agenda is the, well, before we do that, council, I need to get a motion to table item number two on the agenda, which is the oath of office for firefighter Fernando Diaz. He unfortunately had some things he had to take care of at home and was not able to be here tonight. So if I could ask you for a motion to table that item, that would be great.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to table item number two, oath of office for firefighter Fernando Diaz.
I have a motion by Ryan Richard. I have a second by Dottie Hershey. Is there any council discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure.
Item number one on the agenda is the presentation to the Special Olympics, South Carolina Special Olympics, and Chief Steve Parker. It's all you.
Mayor, council, management, just very glad to be here in front of you today. Wanted to first make sure that I recognize Sergeant Rob Burns because without him, I would not be here today. Thanking everybody for their involvement in the South Carolina Special Olympics Polar Plunge. We were able to partner with the Special Olympics Committee. To my right, you have Sue Maynor, who is on the Special Olympics Committee. You have Mike Peak, who is also with the State FOP. And the reason why he's here as well is he helped in organizing this. And also, he was able to talk the State FOP into donating $4,000 to our Tegu K Polar Plunge.
Oh, great.
Which they get one in the state that they get to decide which to do. So I was very proud that they did that. And then Sergeant Burns, of course, for his leadership and guidance in this whole thing. But what I wanted to do now is just announce what the amount was. Mayor, if you would come up with the check and we'll present it to South Carolina Special Olympics. Take it from here.
Sue, on behalf of the citizens of Tegu K, we'd like to present you with this check, $24,571.
Woo-hoo! That's amazing.
Before Sue, I'd like to echo what Steve said. Rob Burns was involved in this thing from the beginning. He put his heart and soul into this. It was amazing to see him do all that work on Saturday. It was also amazing to see the amount of people that decided to go in the water. And I've got to deal with Sue that I'll go in when she goes in. So we got a deal on that.
I just want to say a huge thank you to the council, to the chief, to Sergeant Burns, it's great to work with.
Yeah, he's awesome.
I talked to him about things and he already got his check, but it's way ahead of mine. Got a lot of support from the chief and the whole community. It was so much fun to be out there and have as many people watching as we had. As we're jumping in, it was a wonderful community event. Special Olympics South Carolina has 24,848 athletes. This does a long way in keeping them off the sofa and onto the playing field. We have health programs, we have education programs, and we have leadership programs that we want them to follow. So this is a huge, huge step for that, as well as all of the awareness that happened of that first Saturday. That was a great way to kick off this month. So thank you very much.
Item number two on the agenda was tabled. Item number three on the agenda, public comments. We don't have anyone who's signed up for public comments, but does anybody want to make public comments at this point? Gene? Can you address social security number and blood type, please?
I don't have any of those. Gene Sroth, 3081 Point Claret Drive. I just want to bring it to everybody's attention about the lift station down on Point Claret Drive. I need help. They're driving on my property
Oh, no.
For eight months now to get down to there. And it's time that they fix that road so they don't have to drive on a property. They took the five trees down, but the stumps are still there. They can't drive over the stumps. They're still going over my property. It's time to get it right so that it works. That road needs to be redone, too. It's all tore up. There's trees, roots that are on my property that need to be removed. There's lumber, there's stone, blacktops, all on my property needs to be done. It's time.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks, Gene.
Anyone else? Item number four on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Council, before you, are the regular minutes of the city council meeting of January 17th. Are there any questions or deletions to those minutes? Hearing none, those minutes stand approved. Item number five on the agenda, under unfinished business, is the coyote management update. And that goes to City Manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. In just a moment, I'm going to have Andrew Cole, Songdog Wildlife Management, come up. But just to kind of catch everybody up to speed, if you haven't been watching our city announcements or social media stuff, we pushed out several location maps, both to residents as well as to council, one of which was Greenway around Callaway. Three separate Greenway areas. This is the Winsong Bay Trail Ridge. And then the big one to the right is between Riverbend and Stonecrest Villas. One at the end of Fairway Point, which is towards the top there. The other one by Lake Forest, towards the bottom of the driving range. We later added in the Marquesas Avenue area, based on a lot of reports that were coming in last week. We sent out notification on those. That's around wastewater treatment plant number two on city-owned property. This week, actually yesterday, Andrew set traps over in the Lakewood area, working that area for the rest of this week. To date, we caught coyote number one and coyote number four. In this area, that's towards, let's say, below the water tower, in between the water tower and the footbridge on the walking trail. It's kind of below the cul-de-sac of Winsong Bay for the golfers that are playing at home. This is between holes 14 and 15, in that general vicinity. Caught a male and then later caught the female mate to that one. We also caught coyotes two and three. This is in the big Greenway, kind of in the Nivens Creek, end of Nivens Creek area, in between Riverbend and Stonecrest Villas. Again, that was a male and female mate as well. So that kind of catches everybody up to speed. Andrew, if you could come to the podium. This is Andrew Cole. Andrew is with Songdog Wildlife Management. This is who we've contracted to do this process. Andrew's going to take a few minutes just kind of talking through his process, demonstrating the trap that he's used. We've heard everything from that it's, you know, got big metal teeth to even it has lights and alarms on it that go off when it catches the coyote. So want to show that, give council an opportunity to ask questions that they have of him. At this point, Andrew, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay. Like Charlie said, I've been doing the coyote management plan here for the last week and a half. I've been focusing my trapping efforts in points of interspersion, such as multiple habitat features coming together. The Riverbend area is what I call a big passageway for coyotes. As they come from inland areas down into the peninsula, they're basically passing through those, the power lines and the bottomland areas to come into Tegu K. It's my opinion that many of these areas that they're, that they're coming into it in the peninsula part of Tegu K is actually just for foraging and hunting. There may be some seasonal denning opportunities. The steep ridges and the treveteries that have the rocky outcrops and some of the washed-out areas may be good denning sites for coyotes. But I think for the most part, those, the coyotes are coming down into the peninsula area of Tegu K to hunt. They're not really coming here to den as much as they are just to investigate food opportunities and to pace, you know, look for, you know, maybe an area to low for feed. So that's basically what I've, you know, what my observations have been all week, looking around the grounds and seeing what's legitimately good coyote habitat, what can actually hold, you know, coyote dens and what's just something that's an area that's, you know, just occasionally frequented by coyotes. But the, so far, we've removed two, or two adult pairs, breeding pairs of coyotes this time of year. They have, you know, after the pups have dispersed and have been kicked out, they basically will form their pair bonds, breed in December and January, and they pair up and they hone in on their core areas as they approach the pupping season. So this time of year, you're going to catch your adult pairs, you know, your stragglers that may hang around with the, with the adult pair. But, you know, based on what I've seen, there's not an overwhelming number of coyotes at this time of the year here. You may have an adult pair that, like I said, they come in this area, they forage. They may be on the peripheral areas, you know. And again, it's not, it's not like there's just, like the deer, you have multiple deer that just continue to increase in population and number. And then they reach a point of, you know, biological carrying capacity and then, and then diseases kick in. With the coyote, they form a pair bond and then they occupy and defend a territory and home range. So it's not like you have dozens and dozens of coyotes. What happens is you have the pair move into an area, establish a home range. And then when they have their puppies, that's when you see the numbers of like five or six or eight coyotes together. And during the late summer, early fall, when the, when the pups are out feeding and hunting with the parents, that's when you have another, I'll have a spike of phone calls during that time of the year all across the areas I service where the coyotes will, you know, basically be all hunting together. That's where you have, you know, your frequent observations of coyotes. And so what happens is those pups that are born in areas that are, you know, with people, they've never been pressured by farmers, they've never been pressured by deer hunters or trappers. They don't, they're just like any other teenager. They don't know any better. And so that's where you could potentially have conflicts with coyotes. You know, habituated coyotes, in my experience, can, you know, can cause problems. Most of the work I've done for commercial properties or cattlemen or goat farmers or even people who make socks from alpaca fur that have problems with depredation and losses of coyotes are animals that move into an area and habituate. And they, they are no, they're not pressured. And so as a result, you know, they kind of, being an opportunistic predator, will be a, what, you know, a predator, a coyote, they'll act like a coyote. And so there are a lot of different culture, I'm skipping all over the place here, but there are a lot of cultural methods and things you can do to prevent conflicts with coyotes. For the most part, they're not going to be an issue. The only time that you really have issues is either with a pet or is if you, or if you have an inexperienced pup coyote that comes into an area and he doesn't know any better and he's investigating something as a prey item. Most often times, you know, coyotes keep to themselves. But again, keep in mind that this is an opportunist, you know, an opportunistic predator and they can present issues. Now, as far as some of the, the, I've read through a lot of different comments on the different news articles and, you know, about the trapping device. And the traps that I use are a modern-day live foothold trap. This is a trapping device that is, I've used in my, you know, during my years of college. I went to school in Frostburg State University in Western Maryland and got a degree in wildlife ecology and management. And we use these traps to trap fisher and river otter and relocate them into different areas. So this is a tool that is a research-based tool. It's not the cruel device that people think they are. You know, back in the day, in the Daniel Boone era, you know, you had traps that had the teeth and stuff like that. But the, the modern-day live foothold trap is not anything like that. There's a lot of major misconceptions about the trap. And the traps also can be adjusted, as mentioned in the video. They can be adjusted to miss small animals, miss cats, gray fox, you know, smaller type animals that may set the trap off. I can adjust the pan tension on the trap and I'll bring it up here to show you. So this is the trap. It's got rubber jaws on it. It's got a little adjuster here in the back that helps you increase the pan tension on the trap. And it, you know, this trap here, you, when you bed it in the ground, it's bedded about a half inch into the ground. So when it fires off, it doesn't even, it's not even, it doesn't fire, you know, even raw. It, it, it doesn't even hurt. But it, when it comes up to the ground, it catches the animal. And the way it's designed is to hit, to hold the animal above the pad. It's like a handcuff. It's almost like if, you know, the, you know, with the bio, the anatomy of the dog's foot, it basically would be like the equivalent of holding us above the wrist is the way it holds the animal. Now, it has, this is just a short chain, but I have a shock springs and stuff that go with this trap. But, you know, this trap will not catch deer. It will not maim the animal. You can adjust the trap so it doesn't catch small animals. It's, there's a lot of major misconceptions. And if you did get caught in it, you know, if a kid in some anomalous situation did stick his hand to this, basically he could pull his hand out. Now, there was, I saw a lot of comments about live trapping. Why don't we live trap? Well, this is live trapping. And then as far as the cage trap comments, cage trapping can be effective for coyotes, but it's really not consistent. And I would have more fear about a coyote-sized, dog-sized cage trap in the woods with a kid getting into that than this. I mean, if a kid that went out in the woods exploring and got into a cage trap and then his mom didn't know where he was at, he couldn't get out of that cage and he sat in a cage trap overnight on a 25-degree night, I wouldn't want to see that. So. A dozen of those traps modified.
Excuse me.
Sure.
Gene, when we're done, you can ask your questions if you wouldn't mind. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just kind of skipping all over the place. But, you know, I guess we can go to questions. I can talk forever on biology and what's been going on all week and where we stand and what, what's real and what's not and what's the truth. But, I mean, I guess we can go into questions now.
Okay. Ryan, do you have any questions?
Um, that.
Jen?
Well, thank you for clarifying some of the things that it is or is not because I've had a lot of people not understanding what that is. I thought your video that's online, our website, was very good tutorial for people. But another question that I had, and it's on the state website. So it is correct that they are not allowed to be transported outside the state or to another location in the state. So it's not like we can just give the problem to someone else if you were to trap them, unless they went to a hunting preserve, which where they would then be hunted down and killed.
Yes, that's correct. Again, the coyote is traditionally not a, it's not historically a native animal to the east. It got here through native, you know, natural range expansion, artificial range expansion. And so with it being a nuisance to the agricultural biz, you know, industry, to deer club owners and farmers and a variety, even from water, even watermelon growers have troubles with coyotes eating their watermelon. So it's, it's considered a nuisance species. It's non-native. And because it's a carnivore, which carnivores carry diseases such as parvo, canine distemper, rabies, with all those considerations, it's, that's one of the reasons why it can't be relocated is because people don't want to artificially spread a problem. They don't want to spread potentially disease to native species such as gray fox and raccoons. And then ultimately, it wouldn't do you any good because coyotes have the ability to travel over great distances. And even if I took these coyotes and let them go on Fort Bragg, they would come right back. As a matter of fact, I participated a little bit and have some of the research data from the Fort Bragg study where they were radio, you know, radio collared coyotes just to observe their home ranges, how far they go, where they go to hunt. And we found that, you know, these radio collared animals would go over great distances. After the pups were raised by their parents, they would disperse out looking for their own piece of the pie. And there were some animals that left Fort Bragg in North Carolina, ended up in Alexandria, Virginia, New York State, Georgia State, South, a lot of them went into coastal South Carolina. So these animals have the ability to go over long distances. Now, as far as for the live preserve pens, fox pens, it's, it's, I don't agree with it. And, you know, you'd say, well, wow, you know, there you are trapping and being a trapper and you're having to dispatch and euthanize animals. But, you know, why not put them in a preserve? Well, that, that's something that personally I don't agree with. And also, being a deer manager and a wildlife biologist and a game manager for people, you know, one of the reasons why we have troubles with, with the, with management of certain game species is because of the coyote. There's a reason why the South Carolina has put in an incentive system to try to manage and, and, and go after coyotes because they've been a, been a problem. So I don't agree with, with, with fox pens. And I'd rather, you know, humanely dispatch the animal than have to do, than have to see it go somewhere and get torn apart.
Thank you.
Anything else, Jen? Dottie?
No, sir.
David?
Another misconception is that there's pups in the den right now. And that when, would you please comment on that, that the NR does this for a reason and we can only do this certain months because there's not pups in the den?
Yeah, this is, this is not the right time for you to have pups. You will see them have pups later in the spring. This will coincide with green up and when other species are having their young. So when the food is available for the mother to lactate and have her young and raise her young. So at this time of year, no, you do not have pups, little puppies. You know, like I said, mentioned before, you'll have an adult pair, a mated pair of a male and female that will guard and defend a territory. And they may allow a subordinate female from a former litter hangaround. But they do not, you know, they, they do not have puppies this time of year. It would be a complete anomaly if they did. And I, in my years of experience, have never witnessed pups during February.
And no coyote has chewed its leg off while being stuck in a trap in Tegu K, correct?
That is correct. Now, with, as far as the traps and the feet, it would defeat the purpose of the trap to do its job if it broke the leg or they chewed their foot off. It would defeat the purpose of the trap. I've caught, in my years of experience doing coyote and predator work, I've caught feral cats, pit bulls, bulldogs, labs. I've caught all kinds of dogs in the woods, in the wilds of Anson County, out in South Carolina, North Carolina. I've caught many different animals and I've never once seen any of them chew their foot off, break their legs or anything like that. If you had a heavy trap like that, it could probably do some damage to a small fox. Gray fox are fragile. There could be damage there. That's, that's straight forth honesty, that you could see damage there. With raccoons, you could probably see a little bit of damage if you were to catch them by the toes. But in all my years, I've never seen any damage to even house cats. I've caught plenty of feral cats out in the wilds that are just free-ranging feral cats and I just simply let them go. I've never had a problem with the trap at all. You know, if it wasn't an effective tool and it didn't do what it was designed to do and it just basically maimed the animal, there would defeat the purpose of the trap.
Okay, so we've caught, or you've caught, four coyotes.
That's correct.
We've had people stand at that exact podium that you're standing at, telling us that the city's being run rampant with coyotes and we need to do something about it. If it's not coyotes, what is it?
There, the, I forget the name of the area, the, the area that I just, I later added traps to. What was it? Marquesas. When I was down in those areas, I, I spent a pretty good amount of time in and around the water treatment plant, looking at sign, looking for tracks. You know, all animals will leave behind some kind of sign. And I saw a lot of red fox tracks. And I ran into a groundskeeper who, who knew his wildlife stuff, too. And he, he commented on the red fox sightings. Now, the map that I was originally given earlier, you know, which, you know, when I first started, that showed the hotbeds of activity where the coyotes hang out. You know, you see the big hotbeds up near Callaway and up near where I'm trapping and where I've caught coyotes. Those northeastern and northwest passageways that lead down in here, you know, you could certainly get a lot of coyote sightings there. But I think what's down in the perimeter, you get all these sightings down at the very tip of the peninsula. Not to say that they're not coyotes, but I think a lot of people in the hysteria and unnecessary fear and drama of, that's been created by coyote are seeing red fox at a distance or catching glimpses of red fox. I've even had pest control operators who I work with, who give me wildlife work, not know the difference between a red fox and a, and a coyote. A big dog red fox, which is a male red fox, is very, if you see them from a distance, you could easily mistake them for a coyote, especially during times of year when their coats are drabby or they're shedding.
Okay.
So I think.
Could, could you just give me the cliff notes or for those younger generation, the spark notes of the difference between a red fox and a coyote? We hear that the coyote is a timid animal, okay? And it's not going to approach a human. Is that the same with the red fox? Is it the same habitat that the red fox is going to eat that the coyote eats? Is it all, are they very similar or are we got two different?
It's, it's hard to give the cliff notes without the biologist coming on to me. But the red fox is more adaptable to people than the coyote is. The coyote is adaptable to people. The red fox will not, he, he basically will go after like poultry and, and, and small stuff. But he's not going to eat, you know, they're really, and kittens, small cats could be an issue with a male red fox. But other than that, red fox don't present issues at all. You may get some sick red fox here and there with rabies or parvo. That may be an issue if you have a sick animal with, with fox. Coyotes are much bigger. You know, they're 30 to 40 pounds average here. Your, most of your red fox are going to be eight to 12 pounds. So there's a definite weight difference, height difference. But they are, red fox are quite lengthy. The reason they're down in the peninsula or areas of the, of Tegu K is because coyotes kill and, and, and pressure red fox. We, red fox was king in the 80s and 90s and then when the coyotes started showing up, they disappeared because the coyotes came in and killed them. And so now they're in areas that are very fre, highly frequented by people. They're very adaptable to people and they're getting, they're trying to get away from the coyotes. That's why they're coming further inland to the peninsula. And, and so with the, with the coyote, too, he is a timid animal. He's not a stupid animal. He's very smart. He's cautious, but he's bold. They're an opportunistic predator. They will, they will go after a calf or they'll, they'll go after a wounded deer or they'll, they'll investigate, they'll not necessarily go after an attack, but they will investigate things. If you have a young, inexperienced teenage coyote pup in September and he, you know, and I'm not going to use this as an example to scare people, but I'm just saying, if he sees a two-year-old playing in the yard in the sandbox and he, and he, he may go up there and look at it. He may investigate it. Is it food? Is it a threat? What is it? Coyotes, they have great potential. But for the most part, they tuck tail and run. But where there's a problem, and I've witnessed it before in different capacities and different people I've done work for, is when you have an animal that has become habituated. is when you have an animal that has become habituated and is comfortable. He, when he knows he's king and nobody pressures him, no dogs are after him, no farmers are shooting at him, nobody's hunting him, nobody's trapping him, nobody's keeping him acting like a coyote. That's where you typically have problems. That's what, that's kind of the point of all this is a mitigation and management of potentially problem animals. And you see an animal coming in and charging people or walking up on the path with people or investigating people in their yards, you know, just kind of casually, nonchalantly going by, making aggressive, aggressive moves towards pets on leashes. That's where you typically have an issue.
What do you say about removing the coyotes and upsetting the ecological balance? Because they do take care of mice and snakes and et cetera. And now we're moving them out, so next, God knows what you'll want to kill next. I mean, I guess the foxes are next, but.
Well, they.
Maybe you'll kill me, I don't know. But, you know, first it was the deer, now it's the coyotes. But anyway, what do you say about the ecological, the ecological balance?
Again, this is not a native species to our area. However, it has helped. They will help keep the deer numbers in check to some degree.
Hello, yeah.
They will. Because that's part of, you know, that as a game manager, and I'm helping deer club owners manage predator numbers because they want to increase fawn recruitment on their properties to increase good hunting opportunities in a balanced deer herd. However, you know, you still have plenty of deer here, right? There's been coyotes here for numbers of years, you still have plenty of deer. And the deer, basically, sure, their numbers could increase slightly, but they're still going to live within their biological carrying capacity irrespective to whether the coyotes are here or not.
Right.
There's only so much food and space and they will disperse out or they will, you know, thin themselves. Uh, you will see that and that's a potential. The coyotes aren't the arbiter of, of, of the deer. And, and the native populations of wildlife that exist here, um, you know, they're, they're not going to, there's no need to really, there's no other, again, they're not a native animal. They're not a keystone species. They're not an animal that needs to help manage, keep the, keep the balance. With all the avian predators and hawks and eagles and the fox and all the other stuff and even the free ranging feral cat, which is a deadly predator against small mammals and songbirds.
Oh, yeah.
They, they, they'll keep things in check to some degree. Uh, there's not going to be some major disrupt without coyotes. But, and again, for, for me though, this is a management of a species. Control shouldn't even really be a word used in open space wildlife management. You're, you're managing a species. And so when problems arise, when loss arises, depredation and damage arises, legitimate problems arise. And I would say, you know, you can take action. And, you know, sure, more could move in. You, we could have, I could, you know, this time of year, there could be a straggler that's bouncing around looking for his own little piece of the pie and, and he may move in and, and he may be from a surrounding or he may have come from the country. He may know that he might be a more little reluctant of people. So it might not be a bad thing to remove habituated animals and have animals with more experience in the country move in. That kind of sounds funny, but it's truth is that certain, you know, the country coyote is much different from the urban coyote. They're completely different behaving animals.
So let me ask you this. How long are we, I mean, I, I know we were only going to do this for a week or two weeks or whatever. You've already taken four away. Um, I mean, where, where are we going from here? Are we going, excuse me? Okay, well.
You can if it's a depredation permit.
I think, I think the agreement that we agreed upon last meeting was fourteen days. So that takes us till when? Twenty-seventh of February.
So my question is, have you made an assessment? And I know you haven't been here that long and everybody's not just standing around waiting for you to see them and count them or, you know, assess. But what is your sense, if you have one, about the estimated population based on the areas that you've looked at and, and given your experience, you probably have some sense. I mean, are we talking, we have a hundred coyotes or do we have ten?
I was told in the beginning of the meeting that the Teguka Peninsula is about four square miles, right? The average home range size of a coyote, and we're just talking averages here, is just about two and a half square miles. We have high numbers of coyotes in the east, so, yeah, that one to two square mile range, you could have a breeding pair and maybe some subordinates that hang with them. That's why you can hear, you know, one, you know, coyotes when they cut up at night and you hear them barking and howling, it's basically they're talking, two, two bands talking to each other. Yeah, where you have, or you have the cacophony of a bunch of them getting together and yelping and barking. That's when like family or a, a pair will rendezvous and meet up when you hear that stuff.
Yeah.
So, you know, with the, considering the size of their home range that they defend and they don't allow any other animals into, I would say we've, I've removed two integral breeding pairs from this area. Um, I would think you could probably have a few more around, especially when I go over to Lake Ridge and I see the habitat that's over there. There is a tremendous amount of habitat and I'm sure there are plenty more coyotes over there that could easily come in. You know, but I, I think at this point, my assessment is that, you know, the coyotes that were here, you know, the, and the people have made note of them, especially considering that two of the, one of the pair that I caught were black coyotes. They were jet black. And so, uh, people have seen those animals on the golf course, they've seen them moving around, they're, they're pretty notable animals. Um, so I think where we stand right now is I've caught maybe sixty, seventy percent of the animals here. Um, I would, I could say with confidence that, you know, probably. Uh, the reason I do two weeks of trapping fourteen days is because coyotes don't live in a cul-de-sac. They bounce around that two square miles. They, they go over long ranges. They move and they hunt with their head up. They don't, you know, just live in a small home range like a fox. And that's another thing about when I heard the reports about the coyotes in the driveway, no discredit to whoever saw those animals, but I still, when I, when I heard four, they were in the driveway, I'm thinking habituated, even if habituated, it sounds more like red fox. But I'm sure it could have very well been maybe a band of coyotes that had come through. But, um, right now where I've caught my coyotes are on the main passageways, the greenways that lead into the Teguka Peninsula. That's where I've caught them. And they, both pairs came from the same exact spots, same exact traps.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew, thank you. Public comments, again, to the microphone, state your name and do all the good stuff.
G N S Row Thirty Eighty One Portville Drive. What do those traps cost?
You have to come back to the microphone.
Andrew, you need to come back to the microphone now.
Come over my head. Fully modified, they cost two hundred and ninety dollars for a dozen. Okay. And, and isn't it true that a red fox, you can tell them apart from a gray fox or a coyote, is on the end of their tail, they have a white spot that's bigger than your fist? And that's how you can tell if it's a red fox, correct? Yeah, yeah, the color, yeah, the colors of, gray fox are like the size of a house cat. They're very small. There are native foxes. Red fox, we're talking about non-native stuff again, red fox are actually not native. There are European species that was brought over by European settlers for us to, to run and chase. And, and so the, the Canadian red fox and the European red, they're actually not native. But they're, they're, they're tawny red, kind of orangish color with the white tip on the tail or a black tip. You'll see a lot of black in the legs, jet black on the backs of the ears of red fox. They're, they're pretty big. Uh, like I said, eight to twelve pounds. Gray fox are small. They're like, like I said, if you see them, they're salt and pepper black with a dark black dorsal stripe. They got King Tut markings on their face. They have rust, rusty red in their face and in their chest. They have a black tip on there, they have black down the tail. The dorsal side of the tail has a black stripe with a black tip. And they're very small and they're very cat-like. They can climb trees, they have retractable claws, they can go right up a tree like a cat. And that's why they've been able to escape the coyote.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Yes, sir. Step to, up, you got to step to the microphone, state your name, your address.
My name is, my name is Zachary Smith and I live on Chestnut Hill Drive.
Oh.
So what do you do with the coyotes when you take them off-site?
Hmm. Not good.
The toughest, the toughest question of the night, the hardest thing for me too. You know, you don't have to be, the, one thing I always say to people, and I talk people off the ledge a lot when it comes to animals that have to be euthanized. And for what most people look for is the word that you want, is they almost want you to say is kill. You know, I don't want to have to kill an animal, but you have to be willing to if there's a problem and if it's a legal thing. So unfortunately, they have to be destroyed. In a perfect world, in a perfect Disney world, world, I would take them and release them somewhere and it would just be great. I'd be like, y'all go out there and chase as many rabbits and deer as y'all want. But that's not the reality of wildlife management. And so basically I have to, because I can't discharge a firearm in city limits, I have to get the animal out of the trap live, carry it through the woods in my hands, put it into an animal carrier and then I have to take it off-site. And the way that I dispatch animals is with a twenty-two caliber. It's a quick shot to the head. And, you know, that, I don't like that. Just as much as anybody, she may not like it. It's, it's, it's not pleasurable. I mean, who, who really wants to have to do that? But I don't agree with fox pens and I'm going to keep my license and keep my business. And I'm going to do it humanely and I'm going to do it quickly.
Okay, next question.
Any other questions? Yes, Walt.
Walkersinsky Nine Forty Three Nob Creek Lane. Did you catch the pairs on the same day or were they in separate traps or how were they caught? Days apart, same trap?
Yeah, both the, they were all separate days. And typically they move together in pairs this time of year. It's not uncommon to see the mated pair together. And so what happens is one is, as they're hunting together, one may get caught and the other one may bail out. But a couple of days later, they come back looking. Plus at the trap site where I've caught the animal, it smells like, smells like they're mate. And so they come back to investigate. So both black coyotes were caught in the same exact trap and both gray, regular, normal colored coyotes were caught in the same exact trap, in the same spot.
Thank you. Next question. Would you step to the microphone?
One Zero Zero Six Nob Creek Lane, Teguka. Um, I just wanted to ask a question. You mentioned that they were habituated pairs, were they considered like residents? They were here every year, would you say? Okay, they have pup litters of about five, six pups? Sure, I'm sorry. Those, they have a, about five or six pups. And as soon as those pups are old enough to hunt themselves, they're, they're became transient coyotes. They no, they don't, no longer stay here. They have one litter a year. They don't mate indiscriminately, over and over, right? So you can never really be overrun unless people, and you, you're not going to be threatened by coyotes. Is that true? Would you say? They're not indigenous to South Carolina, but they are. And if you say they're not a keystone species, what is the keystone species of canine in South Carolina now? Because red wolf was at one time, but it no longer exists here.
That's correct, yeah. The red wolf, which does exist in parts of North Carolina through federal reint introductory program, was the, the keystone wild canine. We even had, um, in this parts, many black bear in this parts. We had eastern cougar. So there was a, a litany of different creditors that helped keep, keep the balance. The coyote has taken that niche. But as far as, I see what you're saying, if they keep producing litters and they keep moving out, what is the pro? Well, while those animals are here during, you know, when those pups are weaned off a mother's milk and they're eating solids around the den site, you know, they're, they can, if you, if you have a house close to the den site, you'll know that you have a den nearby because if you see the male and female on a regular basis, even during daylight hours, frequenting a draw or a rocky area, you know that they're hanging in that area, they, they potentially have a den site. Now, when, if you have those coyote pups come up into people's yards close to the den site, you could have an issue. And I've seen that. There have been issues with coyote pups that I've dealt with in the past. I had a woman who had them in her, behind her house in Charlotte. Like I could throw a stone through the, through the trees and hit, you know, the football stadium. And but, and I talked to her, I told her, this is what's going to happen. This is the reality of it. This is what I have to do. And she said, okay, well, she, then she calls back a week later and they, and they're jumping up on her cars. There's fleas in the yard because, there was, a bunch of them had mange. No, they were living in a culvert pipe behind her house. Some of them had mange, there were fleas on the yard, they're jumping up on her car at night. There's kids playing in the cul-de-sac, one of the pups runs out, grabs a tennis ball, even though it seems playful, is like, all right, we've had enough. And this is too close and this is too much.
All right. Andrew, thank you very much. Um, are there any more public comments? Andrew, would you, we're going to move on with the meeting. Could you hang out a little while longer and maybe some of the residents want to talk to you in the, in the hallway or something about what's going on if that wouldn't be a problem for you? Thank you. Um, item number six on the agenda is the, under new business is the qualifications for the Teguka Forever Foundation ward members and that's City Manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, at a previous meeting, staff brought the idea for creating the forever foundation to you guys. Um, we have started, we have, thanks to Bob McCleve and, and his assistance, we have received our articles of incorporation for the foundation, have begun, um, working through, um, putting together the five oh one C three, uh, documents to be able to submit to the IRS. But one of the things we've got to have in place before we can submit that is our Board of Directors. Um, we have advertised for positions, you can see in your, in your packet and this was included online. All this information is, is also available. As far as information for people that are interested in submitting an application to become a board member. Uh, really the purpose of the night, uh, of, of this being on the agenda is one, to keep council up to speed on, on progress and, and where, where things are headed. Uh, but to also, if you'll look at the last page of that section of your packet, um, the very last thing, qualities of initial board members. Um, that's what we have come up with. Uh, if there are additional qualities, um, things you think we should take out, things you think we should put in, um, would like to have that conversation now or if you want to just email me later, that's fine too. Um, and if you know of anybody that you think would be a good fit for this, please encourage them to go to the city's website, uh, fill out the online application, uh, get it to us. So that way we can start setting up, um, interviews, um, to, to talk to these folks and, and, um, and move through the process to where we can bring, uh, council back a list of, uh, potential candidates, uh, for the board. So with that, I will turn it back over to, to you, Mayor and Council, um, for any discussion that, uh, council wants to have at this time.
Charlie, how long is this application process going to be?
For the board members?
Yes.
Um, I'd love to be able to bring council back a list, um, in March, but definitely no later than April. I mean, we'll keep it open until we got, until we've got the, the members.
How are we advertising it to the community that this is out there to?
On all of our normal, uh, social media. Uh, it was in the Rewind, uh, social media website, uh, things of that nature. And we'll continue to push it just as we are with our other, uh, boards and commissions, uh, those, those membership times are, are rolling in. Uh, so we'd like to try to have it coincide, but with this being brand new, um, yeah, it, it may take an extra month, but, um, we're pushing out through our normal communication avenues.
Are we getting applications?
We've gotten a couple, yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Council, any other questions for, um, Charlie on regard to this?
I do. Um, uh, in the description, um, normally the secretary was to be taking care of the bylaws in addition and that's usually specified and I did not see that included.
Okay, we can add that.
Um, and then there's no mention of who is to create the agenda. Normally the president does, but in this case we have staff involved. So would this, the agenda be created by the staff or yourself along with the president?
Probably, as, as we do council meeting agendas, planning commission meeting. I know when Susan puts together the planning commission, uh, agenda, she talks with, uh, with the commission chair, um, yeah, on the items on there, is there anything else that needs to be on there, things of that nature?
Perhaps that could be included so that the persons who are looking at these job descriptions may feel more. Perhaps that could be included so that the persons who are looking at these job descriptions may feel more assurance that they will have someone assisting them with such a large, uh, uh, task here.
Absolutely.
Um, and for the treasurer, I think it's really important that the person understand nonprofit organization because that's very different from business.
Yes, ma'am.
The financials, so, um, and will background checks be performed on all the board members? That should be done.
What, what type of, are you talking about like criminal background checks? Um, we can, we can add that to it, sure.
It's become pretty standard in the nonprofit realm.
Not a problem.
And is there going to be any type of orientation program for these persons? Because just in case they have never been a nonprofit, to understand the rules, great.
Absolutely.
And will there be D N O insurance?
That, uh, is something that, yeah, we, we haven't really formulated a whole lot other than we, we don't want to put the whole, the whole thing together just as staff. And, you know, we, we do want board involvement, um, and, and them helping, uh, and being a part of the discussion. So, I mean, um, will we get, um, I envision this group as, as having insurance separate from the city, absolutely. But I also want to have as much conversation with them. I mean, we've got a draft of the bylaws. But at the end of the day, yeah, the board members really need to, to take ownership on that and, and be a part of that process. I don't, I don't want to get everything put together and then, you know, all right, guys, this is, this is what you signed up for. Yeah, we, we really want them to be a part, as much a part of the process as we can.
I think definitely us having, they need to have directors and officers liability insurance to protect themselves as well as the staff. Um, so I think that should be something that should be, um, looked at. That's all.
Thank you. Ryan? Dottie?
Yeah, Jen, Jen gave you some of the stuff that I had. Um, if we're talking about background checks or something like that too, um, because they're, these are funds, you know, we want, the treasurer at least is going to be a fiduciary, perhaps they all are. So there may need to be some background that looks into that as well.
Not a problem.
Um, and I, and I agree certainly that we want, as you suggest, Charlie, that these folks, you want them to be partners in putting this together. That certainly makes, uh, great sense. But at the same time, you know, I think that if we have a laundry list of items that we need them to attend to, some of the things that Jen mentioned and maybe other things that, you know, certainly nothing wrong with seeing that they take care of those things because this is a, a foundation that could have a lot of money and certainly will have, I don't want to say a lot of power, but they do have decision-making authority and so forth.
And how, how we craft the bylaws, most certainly will play, play a big role in that. I mean, as a five oh one C three, it, we need to have it independent from the city, uh, as, as far as the city council and, and the city. But at the same time, it is a, uh, it is a supporting organization and that's how we filed the, the Articles of Incorporation, was as a supporting organization to the city.
Exactly.
It helps the city and it's part of the city, but it's not part of the city. So the IRS does a great job of making things specifically vague for us there.
Yeah, they, they do sometimes. And I guess, and, and we don't have to talk about it tonight and it may become more clear, again, because it is a separate entity, but it does have to work hand in hand with the city to talk a little bit more about, you know, their limitations. Where, where do they step out and where do we step in? And I know we can't step in and direct them to spend money, but, and again, I'm suspecting this will all become a little more clear down the road.
Yes, ma'am.
There's some of the issues that, um, over time.
And my, uh, staff has been, uh, already reviewing bylaws of other similar, uh, foundations and, and nonprofits and things like that. So we've definitely got good material to be able to pull from.
And do we have, or all the bylaws will state how you elect officers and all of that stuff?
Yes, ma'am.
And, and we already talked about terms, I think. Okay, I, I think that's it for me for now, anyway.
Okay.
It's exciting, though.
So now what do you need from us on this? It says here a motion regarding the changes. I don't really know if there's a motion required.
The, the comments made are, are fine. Um, as, as you go, um, yeah, as you go through the next few days, if you, if you think of more, definitely don't hesitate, uh, shoot, shoot me an email, uh, and we'll work to incorporate those ideas as we go through this process. Um, again, if you, if you know of folks in the community, around the community that you think would be a great fit for this, um, not necessarily worker bees, uh, but more people that have contacts, that are CEOs, that, that know a guy, that knows a guy. You know, um, this is, this is definitely a, you know, not so much a go around to the, to the mom and pop business and knock on the door and, hey, can we have, can we have a check? You know, and they're not running car washes and bake sales either. So, um, yeah, if, if you know people that you think as you, as you review this some more, that you think may fit the mold, definitely send them our way. Um, yeah, I've got staff in our Parks and Recreation Department. They're thinking about, you know, the coaches and volunteers that have been passionate about Catawba Park and about our parks, trying to fill them out to see what their backgrounds are like, um, to potentially be a part of this, so.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I don't need any action at this time.
Great.
Um, and we hope to be bringing you a, a list of, uh, of candidates, uh, as soon as we can.
Perfect. Uh, item number seven on the agenda is the city manager's report. Charlie, do you have anything, uh, else to say?
Very, very brief. Um, would like to congratulate the following staff members on their recent accomplishments. Uh, Lieutenant and E M T Dan Wilkins, uh, was named T K K, um, T C F D firefighter of the year. Senior engineer Chris Reed, uh, was the Newport Volunteer Fire Department, uh, firefighter of the year. Um, and Lieutenant Kenny Salinger, uh, was, uh, and E M T, uh, now Kenny Salinger, was the Flint Hill Volunteer, um, Volunteer Fire Department firefighter of the year. So congratulations, those guys, uh, as, as is the case with a lot of fire departments, uh, throughout the country. When they're off, uh, you know, they work a twenty-four hour shift and then they're off for forty-eight hours. And a lot of them spend that, that time, their quote unquote downtime, volunteering at, at other stations and departments. And to see these guys being recognized by those volunteer departments, hats off to them.
They know we have a golf course here, right?
Um, would also like to mention, uh, Lieutenant Salinger and Lieutenant Blackwelder, uh, recently achieved their national E M T certifications. So with this, our fire department will be assisting on E M T calls within the next thirty days.
Great.
So, uh, thank you to Chief Samansky for, uh, pushing this and, uh, and his, and thank you to, uh, the guys in, in the department for, uh, really jumping on board with it. So really excited about that. Um, Catawba Park, uh, we had, um, Campco Engineering in here, um, what, December meeting, I believe? Um, giving you an update and one of the things they had talked about was their ability to discharge storm waters over to the Duke Energy property and having to elevate the, raise the, the grade by six feet, uh, and putting in temporary basins and things of that nature. Um, did find out from D H E C that yes, we can do that, but only with the owner's permission. So sat down and had a meeting with, uh, Duke Energy and Campco together. Uh, come to find out that Duke Energy is much further along in their FERC, um, permitting process with the, uh, with their recreation management plan than we had anticipated. We were originally thinking a fall approval date. Uh, now it looks like, uh, sometime, uh, late spring, early summer approval date. Um, and with that, basically Duke can't allow us, because of their, uh, FERC permit, to disturb anything on their property, uh, until their recreation management plan is, is approved. Um, so basically, we, uh, made the decision to pump the brakes right now on, um, trying to turn dirt on the ten acres, uh, in March and wait until May because it potentially could save us anywhere between five hundred and seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um, just by being able to get that, that play, that, um, that Duke piece in place before we start pushing dirt. So, um, very, very pleased. Um, there were no comments from any of the commenting agencies. Um, those that were on council when we went through the process for the docs at Windjammer, there's like twelve to fifteen public commenting agencies anytime you do a permit like this. There were no comments from them, uh, first round, so that's great. Now it's opened up to public comments until the end of March. Um, if there are no public comments or substantive changes, um, FERC has iterated to do that, uh, potentially end of April, first of May, they, their recreation management plan could be approved, which includes our Catawba Park site plan, uh, which would be FERC's blessing on the thing.
So if that hap- I'm sorry. So, so if that happens, we won't have to do the elevation?
That's correct. Well, there's still have to be some, but you're only talking about three foot, raising the grade three feet instead of six feet.
That's fantastic.
Yes, ma'am.
That's fantastic, thank you.
So, uh, Bob McLeve, uh, our attorney, is working with me on the Duke, uh, lease agreement, uh, as well as the, uh, Springs lease agreement. And hopefully the Springs lease agreement, we, uh, pretty close on that. Um, and the Duke agreement, um, as, as they always are, is a little challenging, but I feel, I feel confident we'll get through it. Duke's very excited, uh, about the project. Um, and nobody's had negative comments from any of the commenting agencies thus far, so all good things. So that's where we are on Catawba Park. Uh, two last things, Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament, March twenty-fourth at noon. Um, sign up until March eighteenth. Um, so, uh, come on golfers, hackers. Um, I don't profess to be a golfer, so, you know, I, I can go out there and have a good time, anybody can. So, um, definitely want folks to sign up for that. It helps, um, raise the necessary funds for all of our community events all year. Uh, for those, um, that aren't aware of it, uh, all the info is on our website. And last, certainly not least, our committee openings that I mentioned previously. Boza has, uh, Board of Zoning Appeals has three openings. Building Codes Appeals Board has three openings, Planning Commission, four openings, Stormwater Committee, six openings. Um, would like to ask for everybody that's watching, viewing from home or going to watch this later, um, you know, on our, be on demand on our website. Uh, if you're interested in volunteering and being a part of, of what's going on, definitely sign up. Um, obviously, uh, folks that are in those positions now are also more than welcome to reapply as well. But, um, Sylvia, uh, Samansky, our municipal clerk, uh, you can contact her, um, or access the application through our website. And that's my report for this evening.
Thank you, Charlie. Uh, any questions for Charlie?
Yeah, um, can you give us an update on Yubramway?
Um, publicly right now, they're saying a May eleventh opening. Uh, they're working on the Stonecrest Boulevard end, if you haven't been down around the roundabout. Um, working on Stone Base and things, um, and getting that compacted. Ran into an issue, um, in the culvert where the bridge is, uh, getting some washout. Um, they're finally able to get that, get, get that fixed. Should be getting sidewalk, uh, on the Gold Hill roadside, uh, that, uh, runs along Gold Hill Road that was removed. Should be getting that in fairly soon, uh, they've already excavated for it, so, and the weather's obviously cooperating.
Is May later than, wasn't supposed to be February or March?
Yes, ma'am. Um, they ran into about a six to ten week delay because of, uh, utility relocations on the major gas line that feeds the peninsula.
Okay, thank you.
Getting it moved out of the way, yes, ma'am.
They didn't want to shut that off in February.
Yeah, that was a good idea, probably.
Although it wouldn't have mattered at this point. Any other questions?
I had a question, uh, regarding the, the openings for the different committees.
Yes, ma'am.
Last time, we had an abundance of people who wanted to come forth. And I believe it was that you guys were going to re-contact those that were not. Is that something you guys are going to be able to do?
That is something that we are in the process of doing, yes, ma'am.
Great. And then, uh, it's great to hear about Catawba Park because I know that all of us were very concerned about wasting money and why not just put it off a couple of months?
Right.
It's great to hear. Um, are there any LEED type of best practices being used or investigated?
For the entire project, we are following, uh, I would say LEED principles as much as you can for recreation open space, uh, very few buildings. Uh, we are not looking to have it LEED certified.
Right, it's very expensive.
Very expensive just to put a plaque on the wall. Uh, but the, um, both the landscape architect as well as the engineers with, um, with Campco are using LEED best practice, um, best management practices, uh, in the design work, yes, ma'am.
And I do understand that it's very expensive and it's not worth a certification. But if perhaps there were some things that were ideal, yet we perceive them as being maybe stoppers due to cost. If we could have those as bid alternates so that we can consider those, um, if perhaps this foundation were to achieve a wonderful goals or fundraising, then we could, you know, in the long term, that would be the better solution.
I know, I know, um, the initial talks mainly like around storm water and things like that, instead of putting, um, in areas where we didn't necessarily have to put a pipe underground, uh, do it through drainage wells and rain gardens and, and different things of that nature, instead of just, well, let's excavate and put, put infrastructure in the ground. So I know they are looking at, at incorporating those as, as they continue through with the design portion, yes, ma'am. But having those bid alternates, most certainly.
Okay, fantastic. And I have, uh, not sure when to bring it up, but the business license debate that is before us, I'm.
Oh, I'm ready for that.
Okay, I'm very concerned with it. I am in agreement that we need to do better for our businesses statewide of having a single date, single deadline, single on location for them to be able to put all their single form. Um, but I'm very concerned with the special exemptions that are really going to be hurting our small businesses and.
Yes, ma'am.
So how are we as a unified?
I think the mayor's got a lot to share on that, that we've been working on.
Thank you.
Ryan, anything for Charlie?
Nope, nothing.
David? Good. Um, item number eight on the agenda is public comments. Are there any additional public comments? Hearing none, seeing none. We'll move on to, uh, item number nine, council comments. Um, it is not usual that I start the council comments, but I'd like to this time, if you don't mind. Um, first of all, I'd like to congratulate, um, David O'Neil. Um, he has graduated from the Municipal Association Elected Officials Institute, which is a lot of hours and a lot of time you put into going to, uh, do those classes. So congratulations on, uh, getting that accomplished freely. And now I will turn it over to the traditional way. Ryan?
Um, I'll be real quick. For those of you watching at home, just so you know, there's no choppers outside, there's no news vans, there's zero protesters holding signs worried about coyotes. Um, you know, it's our job, it's our focus, in my opinion, that we look to what the opinions of our citizens are and go in the direction that they expect us to go into. I'm going to have zero doubt that in this scenario, that's what we did. And I thank Son Dog for coming out. Um, you, you gave some very good information and I think cleared the air and a lot of concerns or misinformation that people may have had or thought. And so thank you for coming out. You did great and I'm sure you'll get a few other questions when we get into executive session. But aside from that, that's all I have. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Ryan. Jen?
Um, I'd like to also answer or talk about the coyotes because I've been asked about it. Why I decided. And it does not go along with my core values as a person. Uh, but I was elected to serve everyone in our city and I thought it was the best decision because I believe that there is a possibility of habitual, them being just too comfortable with the situation, our area because of people telling me that they're walking their children in strollers and being aggr- the animals being aggressive, not being afraid of them. Um, and actually someone told me that their dog was attacked while they were walking them on a leash. So those kinds of things made me realize it was a safety concern. And then I did find there was research that's available online. Um, and it's through the National Wildlife Control Training Program. And basically there's a checklist. And the more you check off these boxes, one through eight, it elevates in concern and possibility of there being a problem in the community. And we have seven of those, eight checked off. Now that's with the assumption that residents are being honest and, but I have no reason to doubt this many people telling me these things. So that's why I decided to act on this direction. On a more positive note, the Spring Pick Me app, if you want to mark your calendar, is April twenty-second. Um, it's a great way to come together as a community. Uh, Tim Gillette, I, I realize, I think he's the one coordinating again this year, and Joey Bletton. Um, so if you have a group of kids who want to come together and serve a certain area or adults, um, there's lots of opportunities to serve, um, right in your backyard. And then, um, for the, uh, beautification committee, we had a workday this morning, it was great. Um, we have a lot of workdays planned. Um, just go to our Facebook page and it has a whole list. And if you're unable to make it during the week, just send me, um, a post through the, I manage their page. So I'll let you know all the to-dos that you could do any day of the week.
Thanks, Jen. Dottie?
Um, well, um, I guess I'll make an, an additional comment on the coyotes since my fellow council members are. I made my position clear at the last meeting. And, you know, for me, it wasn't a choice between the safety of the citizens or animals. I mean, people come first at all times. I made my decision based on what we heard from D N R and the own research that I did. And I mentioned that my concerns were liability for the city with the traps, um, which I feel a little better about tonight, uh, since you've been here. But, um, my concern is that we are going to disturb the ecological balance. And because of what D N R told us when they were here for an hour and a half, talking to us, their suggestion was when you remove, like what I'll call the dominant pair, for lack of a better word, um, you know, the rest of the gang gets excited that they, I guess they can multiply. Um, you know, they told us that when we get rid of the dominance, that the remaining will have more pups. Um, so what I'm afraid of is that, I'm not saying the money's wasted, but I'm saying that we're trying to eliminate a problem and we might be creating a bigger one. So that was my other concern. Um, and, you know, just from a humane, uh, perspective, I don't like to see anything trapped and I certainly don't like to see anything killed, uh, unless of course, you know, obviously if they were out chewing up my dog or my husband, I'd go out there and shoot it myself. I mean, you know, you do make those choices, but I just felt very, um, very concerned about that as well. So I don't want to be right, I don't want to be wrong, I don't want my fellow council members to be right or wrong. I think it was a very hard decision for all. I think it was a very hard decision for all of us. I shouldn't speak for all of us, but I think we all were sensitive to it and people voted, you know, the best way they, they could, understanding the facts and, and where things stood. So my hope is that, you know, since I'm, I'm the only one that said no, that, you know, I don't get out and get shot or trapped. But, you know, we, we make the best decisions we can here. We do everything that we can to support the city, to support the people that live in it, and to also preserve the environment that we live in. You know, as I said quite facetiously, but maybe not, you know, a year ago, it was the deer and everybody, people wanted them gone. Now we want the coyotes gone. Next, I'm afraid, I don't know what's going to come next. Now people heard about red foxes, so that'll be the next thing. And I'm not sure where it stops. And so sometimes I have to say, gee whiz, if you don't want to live with nature, then, you know, live uptown in a high-rise. I, I don't know what else to say, but I'm saying too much, I'm sure. But I'm concerned about it. I hope it goes well, whatever it is. I hope it resolves, whatever the problem is, and we don't have to address it again.
Thank you. Nothing. The reason, and, and I guess I'll, I'll say this, based on the phone calls that I've received, and I told the folks the same thing, including the one that I got on a Thursday night at 12:30, which I went to voicemail because I didn't want to deal with it 12:30 at night. The reason why I went the way I went was because I don't know if we have a problem or not. I'm not an expert. You know, we, we, we had an issue with deer. Azaleas bushes were being eaten, tulips were being eaten, all of that, and people told us we had an issue with deer. So we had DNR come and, and count the deer, and turns out, we really don't have an issue with deer. Then, you know, now we hear the coyotes are the issue, and DNR didn't offer us the ability to come and count, count the coyotes. So we spent $1,400. That was not in the budget. We, we voted to do it, and we voted because of the fact that it affected the budget, to come and see if we have a coyote problem. I hope we don't. And based on the fact that, that so far a week's gone by and we've caught four coyotes, I don't think we do. I hope I'm, I'm accurate in that. But I don't know if we have a problem or not, unless we try and find out if there's a solution or if there's a problem. So that's why I went the way that I went. The other thing I want to discuss is something that's before the State House, which is the business license bill. And they want to, Columbia wants to go away from something they voted on several years ago, hometown rule. And they want to take over the, the business license bill. And, and we have businesses that pay a business license to the city, and that affects our budget if they get involved in it. To the tune, over the next two years, it'll be about $700,000, if, if the way the, the State House wants it to go, the way it wants it to go. I've had conversations with Mayor Echols in Rock Hill, Mayor Savage over in Fort Mill, Mayor Greis over in Clover, Mayor Lee over in York. The five of us will be getting together and, and having a discussion in regards to this. I've also spoken to our representatives, Tommy Pope, Gary Simrell, and Ray Felder. As you know, Ralph has resigned, Ralph Norman has resigned his seat at the House, so he's not part of this anymore. They're not very, they seem to be a little confused as to what's going on themselves. And they don't understand what the impact to all of us is. If this goes through, the city of T.G.K. will probably have to increase taxes. And the increase to taxes will be about seven mills. An average cost of a mill is about $55,000 as per York County. We'd have to do an increase of seven mills, but the state legislator won't allow us to do an increase of seven mills, because they'll, they, they tell us how much we can increase our mills based on the CPI and the population. So they're kind of handcuffing us on this whole thing. If, if, if this goes through and we can't do the mill increase, that means that we may not be able to hire firefighters. We may not be able to fire, hire police officers. This will all affect our budgets dramatically. The city of Clemson, and I, and I will make sure that each one on council gets that, passed a resolution two days ago, I think it was, two or three days ago, which they're going to send down to their legislation, basically saying that you can't adopt this this way. Yes, there needs to be a standardization. There needs to be a way that we all do it the same way. Like Jen says, the same date, the same amount. Everything has to be the same. I get that. But the state legislature doesn't need to tell us how we need to do our business until they know what our business is all about. So I'm going to, I'm going to ask Sylvia if she can take this resolution and pass it to council tomorrow, and hopefully get it on the agenda for next month, so that we can pass this, so we can send it down to, to Columbia and tell them. I encourage folks to call the state legislatures and tell them that this is not, this is not going to be good for the city of T.G.K. My conversation with Tommy Pope this morning was that he doesn't think it's going to go, really go anywhere. Conversation with Gary Simrell this afternoon, he said that there's so many other things that are on the agenda right now for the House that he doesn't think it's going to, it's going to make it this year. They've got to deal with the pension fund and, and a bunch of other stuff, and then the budget. So he doesn't think it's going to come, come through this year. Ray Felder was more listening and, and trying to observe what was being discussed in my conversation with her two hours ago. So there's, there's a lot of conversation. There seems to be someone who's got an issue with the Municipal Association, which supports the city of T.G.K. as well as all of the cities in, in South Carolina. And they want to make a point that Municipal Association doesn't need to be involved in this. So I, I'm, I'm going to encourage my fellow council members to, to read this resolution that, that Clemson put forth, get it on the agenda for our next meeting, and then have a vote to support it. But I also, if you, if you run into or you're talking to your representatives, please feel free and, and please discuss it with them, because it's, it's going to be devastating to a lot of cities, and, and including the city of T.G.K.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask the $700,000 over two years, how was that, was that based on the, the special exemptions?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, you know, one of the special exemptions that's in there, which I find very interesting, Walmart, which is based out of Arkansas, will not have to pay the full price of a business license anymore. They only pay 25%.
No, so they would get a 25% exemption.
I'm sorry, 25% exemption to the business license, because they are based out of Arkansas. But Danny's Pizza, T.G.K. Deli, the Greek Restaurant, they would all have to pay 100%. So this business license, the way it is, seems to be supporting the big guy.
It's hurting the small businesses.
And it's hurting the small folks. So, so the publics of the world, the, the Walmarts of the world, the DQs of the world will get an exemption, but the little guys won't. And the little guys are the ones that are basically members of our community that are working here. So we need to, we need to get together and, and, and do something about it. So that's my, that's my opinion.
Yep.
All right, let me get off my soapbox, and we'll move on to item number 10 on the agenda, which is an executive session. Council entertaining motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion that we move into executive session to discuss contractual matters pertaining to the sale of city-owned properties, TMS 643-1201, 060, 061, and 062.
I have a motion by Dottie Hershey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any council discussion? Hearing none, call the question, all in favor, sing by saying aye.
Aye.
We're in executive session.